The livestream has started.
Thank you.
Good evening Azusa Community, students, parents and staff. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order today on Thursday, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We are now on item 1.0, roll call. Board member Bo?
Here.
Board member Arianas?
Present.
Board member Greer?
Here.
And board member Benavitas?
Here.
We are now moving on to item 1.3, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by board member Arianas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Greer. Any discussion? This team, we've taken a hand vote. Board member Bo? Board member Arianas?
Yes.
Board member Greer?
Yes.
And board member Benavitas?
Yes.
And yes for me, item passes 5-0. Now moving on to item 2.0, public comment on closed session items. Do we have any cards, Lika or anyone on the Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
And we have no blue cards in, in, uh, in person.
Thank you. We are now moving on to closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM.
The meeting is open and the livestream is on.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening Azusa Community, students, parents and staff. Welcome to our regular Board meeting of education. Moving on to item 4.1, the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Azusa High School Cadet Major Tereb Villa from Azusa High School, JR2C, to come to the podium, please.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5.0, before the action of closed session matters, by the vote of 5 to 0, the board adopted final settlements for office administrative hearing case 2023110650, student number 2324-01-12. We are now moving on to item 6.1, recognition of Sierra High School for being selected as a non-continuation school. Mr. Tega, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President. Uh, we're so proud, uh, to be able to honor Sierra High School tonight for their recognition as a model continuation high school. The model continuation high school, uh, program is a state level, entire California, uh, program that identifies and recognizes outstanding continuation high schools throughout our state. This year, the state recognized only 31 such schools. Of those 31 schools, nine of them came from Los Angeles County, which by the way, has 80 districts. And of those nine, Sierra High School is one of them. We are so proud of the students, the staff, the parents and of the community, um, there, um, for being able to represent us at such a high level uh, at the state. And so, um, I just want to acknowledge, uh, what an amazing, uh, place, uh, Sierra High School is. Um, they go out of their way to offer their students, um, uh, a comprehensive high school experience as closely as possible by sports, student leadership, AP courses, dual enrollment courses, CTE. Um, and so just extremely proud of the work, uh, that they do there. And so please join me in congratulating Sierra High School.
Board member Arianas?
Yes, I have the honor presenting this certificate and it says, Azusa Unified School District's Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to Sierra High School for offering exemplary instructional strategies and being selected as a model continuation school. March 12th, 2020, signed by Superintendent Arturo Ortega and Board President Yolanda Rodriguez Peña. Let's give him another a round of applause.
Do the board members have any comments? Board member Bo?
Way to go, uh, to keep Azusa continually on the map for all of our achievements. Um, I've visited a couple of continuation high schools in the San Gabriel Valley and we are certainly leading the way. So it's wonderful to be recognized at the state level for all of our hard work. Congratulations.
Board member Greer?
Oh, I'll save, we're, we're gonna be talking about Sierra again. I'll save my comments for, for after that.
Board member Benavitas?
I'd like to say congratulations to the students, faculty, staff, teachers, everyone at Sierra High School for keeping Azusa on the map. I did look back a couple of years back, way back, and I noticed, um, they were acknowledged in the past. So congratulations again. Thank you for everything you do.
I would like to, I would like to thank the parents, um, of the students at Sierra High School and the teachers. And most importantly, the stu-, uh, the staff as well. And everybody that has come together to, to make this model continuation school be an exemplary in LA County. And actually, we've received some other awards as well. You know, to, to say the least, uh, what board member Benavitas, uh, shared, Sierra High School is an amazing high school and we are very proud of all of you guys. So congratulations, let's give them all a round of applause.
I als-, I also like to acknowledge, um, Sierra High School as our alternative high school. I, I personally do not like the word continuation, in my opinion, right? Because I feel that, um, our alternative high school has AP courses, sports. I have gone to their basketball games and their, um, baseball games. They have award assemblies. They have a, um, CTE courses and graduations, just like every, all our, we have cap and gown on the stage. It's just a little smaller, but I want to also thank the staff, the administration, parents and students who make it happen. Thank you. So who could come to this picture? Um, do you have any words to say? Why not?
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, that didn't help.
There you go.
So again, just incredibly proud of the entire team and what they do day in and day out. Um, I mean, just every single day in awe at the commitment and the heart that the entire team puts into everything that they do. And then also the commitment and dedication of our really, really, um, just engaged families that do not hesitate to provide feedback and that is welcome. And also our students who really share their opinions and making sure that Sierra not only is a great place, but continues to grow, um, in the right direction. So thank you, everybody.
Now we're moving on to item 6.2, recognition of Sierra High School uh, for, um, basketball, flag football and soccer team for the successful. Ms. Pearson, you'd like to come up to the podium, please? You should have stood there.
Okay, I promise I'll make sure to use the microphone this time. Um, the sports program at Sierra High School is really a model in and of itself. Um, and it wouldn't exist if it wasn't for key team members, key staff members that make sure every single year that they make it happen, that they organize it. Um, and I want to thank specifically our coaches, um, two of which are here tonight, Mr. Adam Lemunian, Mr. Gary Lambright, and Mr. Kevin Knight. We all believe that having a sports program is an incredibly enriching and really gives that fuller experience to school um, and is completely necessary, but without the hard work and dedication of our coaches, the program wouldn't exist. So I want to thank them and also the students that are committed to participating. Um, they are co-ed sports programs, so everyone's welcome. And just seeing the students out there engaging, practicing, um, it really warms the heart. So thank you for the recognition tonight.
And we have each, um, okay, sorry. Each colleague, you'd like to read it, start from the right? And any, um, things you have to say?
So, so your mine in particular says, uh, Sierra High School, uh, actually, the Azusa Unified School District's Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to Sierra High School's soccer team, uh, for a successful season. Um, and yeah, just kind of sharing my comments for, for both the first item and this item. I'm, I'm just so proud of, of Sierra High School. I'm, I'm, I'm just so proud of Sierra High School. I'm so grateful for Sierra High School, so grateful for not only what it is within our own community, but, but what it reflects uh, for the communities around us as, as well, uh, just the, the way that it, that it shines. And so it doesn't surprise me that, that we're recognizing and looking at the successful teamwork and sportsmanship um, across the, the, the various sports. Um, and it's common for us to, to take time here during our, our school board meetings to recognize, uh, Sierra High School and, and just the incredible achievements of, of its students and of its staff. Um, and so this is just, I don't know, Sierra High School night. And, and on Sierra High School night, just want to express just how grateful I am, just the, the appreciation I have and, and just how proud I am of Sierra High School of, of, uh, from administration to staff and students, families, um, everything across the board, just congratulations and thank you for, for all that you all do.
Board member Arianas? Excuse me, board member Benavitas?
Okay, my, my certificate says, Azusa Unified School District's Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to Sierra High School Flag Football for a successful season, showing excellent sportsmanship and teamwork. Congratulations.
Board member Bo?
Azusa Unified School District's Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to Sierra High School Basketball for a successful season, showing excellent sportsmanship and teamwork, this 12th day of March, 2024. Congratulations.
Your turn, Arianas. Oh, you don't have one, I'm sorry. Okay, well, I want to congratulate all the students and all the sports. I think that they really go out and work very hard and the coaches also, I always see them, uh, come along with them and that's really true. It takes a team, it takes a village and that's what's happening at Sierra High School right now. So if you can come to the middle and have a picture, please? Bring all your pictures. We are now moving on to item 7.1, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Hope, do we have any blue cards or Lika, anyone on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
We have one card, one blue card.
Alex Garcia, please come to the podium.
That better, oh, there we go, yeah, big difference. Hi, so my name is Alex Garcia. I'm the new supervisor at, uh, Valleydale and Dalton Park. So I'm actually overseeing both. Um, I know both parks have been, um, staples in the community for a while. So one of the reasons why I'm here at this meeting is just to introduce myself and hopefully in the future I get to meet more of the staff, um, and then maybe working together, uh, through some collaboration, get to get some of our programs, uh, up and running again. I want to see the parks, um, succeed because I know, uh, they go hand in hand working with the schools. We have a, a youth at work program where we have a lot of, uh, current students that actually, I believe, uh, I think it's Azusa High School, um, that are actually working on part of my staff. So I do give, um, you know, I think we can staff up to like 10, 10 per park. So my goal is to get those numbers up, not only to get them experienced, but to have them also working within the community and to also have, um, that program also, you know, get better and through that, they could become great leaders within the community and then show, um, everybody, you know, in the school district that this program, not only is it, is it successful, but, um, you know, again, through collaboration that can feed into hopefully, uh, other programs and building these relationships to get whether, whether it's our sports programs or whatever programs, maybe work together to, to get those numbers up as well. I know, um, this community, I, I have family that actually live in this community. It's been a while since I've been here and, um, now that I'm kind of reintroduce this community again, I can kind of see exactly that it's a, it's definitely a family oriented community and I do see that. So I do come from a background where I was working with the City of Commerce before. I grew up in that community. I know that's a very tight knit community as well. So my goal is to, uh, get familiar with everybody, with the staff, with the families and just build those relationships again. So, um, hopefully you'll see me more, some of these meetings, I'll come with more specific, um, you know, related topics on how maybe we can get certain things possibly like done and how we can work together. But I definitely appreciate your time and I hope to see everybody in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So I was gonna say welcome, but welcome back. And moving on to item 8.1, comments and reports and requests by the Board of Education. Board member Bo?
Thank you, Board President. I just wanted to share that I had the pleasure of serving as a Read Across America volunteer at three of our campuses over the past couple of weeks. Um, I got to read in two classrooms at Hodge, um, two at Lee and one afternoon, uh, classroom at Longfellow. Um, the joy of reading is something that I grew up with and so I'm glad that we're, uh, sharing that opportunity with our elementary students. Uh, they got, in some cases, they chose the book, in some cases I brought my own. Um, my recommendation, if you're going to read a Dr. Seuss book, do some face exercises to get you loosened up. Uh, and so it was a great time and I was, uh, very grateful to see, uh, kids across a variety of classrooms. Thank you.
You're welcome. Board member Arianas?
Good evening, everyone. I hope, um, everyone has adjusted to the time change. I know it took me a little bit of time and it caught me off surprise. I actually didn't even know that it was time change until I looked at the clock in my phone. So anyhow, welcome to, uh, spring that's coming up really soon. I do want to let you guys, uh, I want to wish you guys a hap-, uh, happy, what, St. Patrick's Day, Good Friday and Happy Easter, since we will not resume for another board meeting until April. So just want to go ahead and, uh, wish you guys all the happiness in the next month or so. And I see a lot of familiar faces here today, tonight, so hello and welcome to our board meeting.
Board member Greer?
Yes, hello, and similarly, just want to wish all of the happies, uh, for, for the various things. So yeah, St. Patrick's Day, Easter, all, all the things. And also, um, hoping that you're able to kind of gear up and, and plan for the upcoming break that's coming your way. So, so kind of gauge the, the, the work that you have in such a way that you can take some rest um, and whatnot during spring break and then come back strong to, to finish up strong. And, and that goes to the, our students as well as to our, our staff, um, and, and, um, uh, other folks working within the district. So, um, just, just thanks again for all that you do.
Board member Benavitas?
I'll just echo what my peers said, um, regarding the upcoming holidays. Happy Easter, Happy St. Patrick's Day, enjoy your break and, um, glad to see you when you come back. Thank you.
Thank you. So one thing I didn't hear is Happy International Women's History Month.
That's right.
Nita, congratulations to all the mujeres. And it should not be, it should not be month. It will have to carry our child nine months. It shouldn't be month, just saying. So, moving forward, Azusa High School, um, I went to the Student of the Month. Um, I want to congratulate, they had 18 students who were given awards, which is like 7:45 in the morning and, but it was really great, parents were there and students were given awards for their leadership, improvement, excellence. And they're so, they can be selected by the office staff, their teachers, the cafeteria lady, custodian, whomever. And it was very nice event. Um, I want to congratulate the students. I did go to several classrooms to Read Across, um, America, just like, um, board member Bo said, that's very true, you have to have the right expressions in your faces and you have to go along with it because the kids are, they're just staring at you and it's a lot, and, and I enjoy that. Are they just ask you questions like out of this world, you're like, uh, you know, they catch you, right? So you gotta be ready, but it's good. Um, I also went to Paramount Elementary School and, um, jump, for heart. The weather was beautiful and I'll tell you why. That was the Thursday that at night it rained cats and dogs and everything. In the morning though, sky was blue, perfect. Yet the kids had so much fun going from station to station, um, with their hula hoops, jumping rope, playing ball, um, check, checking their heart to see, you know, if it was pumping, how many, and I want to, the teacher's right here. I want to congratulate or I want to thank, um, fourth grade teacher Christina Ramirez, Mr. Ramirez, to continue this yearly because the kids really enjoy it. I went to the Carvee, yeah, alright. You know, I was gonna say your name, huh? That's why you came, right? Uh, I went to the Cabe, uh, Conference and the Cabe Conference, uh, I, I went to several workshops and, um, our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Camacho, she did a fabulous job. She did a great job talking about the great things and what we do with our EL students here at Azusa Unified School District. I went to one class that kind of stuck out to me was embracing the tapestry of our diversity. That was, um, creating the ultimate experience for newcomers. So the question is, you know, our newcomers, when they, sometimes they come to us from a war zone, you know, and I, I, I would like to know, like, you know, what are we doing to make them feel safe here where they're at in this country? And a lot of them come without, with no belongings, they just have to leave like right away. You know, I, I'm hoping, I, I don't think we do this, it's just a question. You know, we don't just hand them a Chromebook, they probably don't even know what a Chromebook is, right? So we need to move slowly with these students. I, I, they did recommend that, um, we have a 10-day summer boot camp for them before our regular school year to work with the students and talk to them and see what their needs are and how we can work with them, how we can help them. So I will talk to Ms. Camacho moving forward. Um, I went to the Laco, the Women's Leadership and Empowerment Conference and that's, um, the one workshop and the peanut speakers are great. And I went to one workshop, growing your leadership in education through public speaking. So when you're speaking, the question is, how do you want to portray yourself? How, what do you want people to view when you're speaking? So of course they look at your, you know, like up here we're movie stars, right? Your posture, your tone of voice, how you're saying it, what you're moving, and that's right up my alley. So that was a great class. Thank you. And, uh, we're moving on to item 9.0, comments and reports by the student board member, superintendent and cabinet.
Thank you, uh, Board President. I'd like to turn it over to Emily Hernandez from Azusa High School. Lika, is Emily with us?
I do not see her on Zoom.
Okay, no worries, thank you. Then we'll like to turn it over to Mariah Santos from Sierra High School.
Good morning, Board Members, Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. As always, it's a pleasure to be here representing Sierra High School. Since the last meeting, I'm proud to announce that last week, the California Department of Education officially announced Sierra High School as a model continuation high school. Coming to Sierra my junior year was one of the best academic decisions I have made. Those of us here at Sierra know what a special place it is, but it is also, but it is also great when others recognize it as well. We started off our third try, our third and We started off our third tri- our third and last trimester of the school year with some new transfer students from Azusa High School. But we also said a temporary goodbye to some of the fellows, some of my fellow seniors that completed their credits early. We see them again at graduation, but it is bittersweet as it is also my last trimester of high school. We just started our last four of the school year volleyball with an exciting game coming up later this month. Students in leadership are still organizing regular Sierra Spirit Days. Last Friday was Sleepy slash Pajama Day, where during lunch, we played a few rounds of musical chairs. Activities like this really make a difference in the connection we have on campus and another reason why Sierra is such a great place. We also have our trimester two awards ceremony on Friday, March fifteenth. This is an opportunity for students to be recognized for a variety of reasons, like not only their academic achievements and citizenship, but for a positive attendance and for being a positive example. For the trimester one awards, I was named senior of the trimester and it was a pleasure to be acknowledged for my achievements. It has been a lot of work leading up to our final trimester with seniors applying to Citrus and making plans for life after high school. Some of us are going on a field trip later this month to Citrus College to tour the campus that we will call our school when we become college students. We're off to a great start for the third trimester and I'm looking forward to things to come. Thank you and go Spartans.
Yay. Good weekend, Ortega.
Thank you, uh Board President. Again, I just want to echo um my congratulations to Sierra. One thing I I failed to mention, um I think as a as an indicator, um sometimes students go to Sierra because they're behind credits. And so they gotta go uh catch up. And we hear story after story after story of students who do what they're supposed to do are are done and cannot go back to their comprehensive high school and on their own volition decide and say, no, I'm I'm good here. I like it here. And so what an indicator, right, of of how much investment uh goes to students there. Uh so again, congratulations to Sierra High School. Um I want to publicly thank uh the City of Azusa. After uh many conversations and lots of meetings, I'm happy to announce that there is a stop sign at Rockville uh between Azusa High School East and Azusa High School West. And so just want to say thank you uh to Azusa, to uh the City of Azusa for that. And then lastly, just speaking and focusing on students, uh I was able to uh sit in for a while at the Student Advisory Council. Uh this council uh does many things, but its main focus is to speak into the Outcap. As we all know, right now, we are writing a brand new Outcap. And just to sit there and just in awe uh to listen uh to to students um speak eloquently and uh disagree respectfully and engage in a conversation about a word and what it portrays and and why would we want to use uh this when we can say it this way? And just being laser focused on the goals, uh again, is just, it's just, it's just a a beacon of pride uh to be able to to see because that's what we collectively are are investing in and producing. Um and so uh we should all be very proud of the level of our students. And just want to uh thank uh Adriana Garcia Medina for creating a space uh where that is allowable and that is uh expected. Um and so I just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um I also would like to echo the celebration and congratulate Sierra High School on all of the accomplishments. Um they are a bright light in our district and it's wonderful to be able to celebrate them this evening. I also um want to recognize our community schools teams, AHS Student Union, peer mediators from Valleydale, Murray, Magnolia, Gladstone Middle School, who um were part of the Peer uh Mediation Invitational hosted by the Western Justice Center at the California Endowment. Um and also want to remind everyone that the Junior Olympic Track Meet is coming, coming up on Saturday, March twenty-third. We're excited um to bring the event um back again.
Good evening. Um I want to echo of thanking the City of Azusa um for their partnership in putting the um stop sign there. Um I know our community and our students are excited and staff are excited for that. I also want to congratulate Sierra High School um for their recognition, but also thank my girl here, Kamo, for your recognition, for your award. I know it's a lot to get recognized by your peers, so that's huge. And then lastly, just announced that we're going to continue on our training for SB um thirteen eighty-three, which is the recycling and composting at all of our sites with the new trash cans and making sure our staff, students and um faculty all are aware of the process and what we have to do.
And good evening. Uh I also want to congratulate Sierra High School on being recognized as a model continuation high school, definitely a well deserved recognition. I also want to share with the Board of Education that Azusa High School um started a Future Teachers of America Club. At their first meeting uh in February, more than forty students at during a lunchtime meeting. Um I would like to thank our Azusa High School teacher, Claudio Soria, sorry about that, uh who is our advisor uh for this club. Um this opportunity was made possible through our partnership uh with Azusa Pacific University. And I particularly want to thank Professor, uh Dr. Paul Flores, who was instrumental in helping us uh launch this this partnership. So while the state of California um is in the midst of a teacher shortage, I'm happy to report that we are cultivating the future teachers of Azusa.
Yay.
And lastly, I would like to announce that we had a whopping number of employees participate in the Classified Summer Saver, totaling a hundred and nineteen classified employees sign up for the twenty twenty-five Classified Summer Saver Program. That's a huge number of of employees to participate. By comparison, some of the other li- local districts um are struggling to break twenty. We broke a hundred and almost a hundred and twenty, so um hundred and nineteen employees participating. That's an amazing number. Um and of those employees that are participating, uh the employees have elected to contribute a combined amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents for the Summer Saver Program. And the state uh will match up to um of that amount for the summer of twenty twenty-five.
Wow, that's great. Yeah, thank you very much for your presentations. Um now we would, moving on to item ten point one, approval of the consent calendar. All matters listed listed under the consent calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless requested by Board of Education member. If a Board of Education member requests discussion, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Adianis. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Graham. Any discussion? Seeing none, place your vote, please. Can we do, we can do a hand vote? Board Member Bo?
Yes.
Board Member Adianis?
Yes.
Board Member Greer?
Yes.
Board Member Benavides?
Yes.
Yes, from myself. Five unanimous votes. Thank you. Move, now we're moving on to uh item twelve point one, presentation of San Gabriel Valley Regional Occupation Program, ROP. I'll turn it over to Norma Camacho.
I would like to invite Mr. Frank Cheng um to introduce our presentation for this evening.
Good evening, Board President, uh members of the Board, Superintendent and Cabinet and the AUSD community. Uh we have a long lasting and very um prosperous relationship with the San Gabriel Valley ROP. And we are very thankful for this partnership. Uh one such person I want to thank personally is actually Bridget Hernandez, who will be presenting today. She is the Executive Director of Educational Services for the San Gabriel Valley ROP. We work closely together and I'm always thankful for her partnership. And she will be presenting tonight on the audit of our courses here at Azusa Unified. Bridget?
Thank you, Frank. It's a pleasure to be able to work with you side by side every day. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Ortega, Executive Cabinet and the Azusa Community. My name is Bridget Hernandez and before we get started this evening, I'd like to take a moment to express gratitude to the core AUSD team for their support in our partnership. Um starting off with Frank and Dr. Camacho, um from the Ed Services side of the House, they've been instrumental in partnering with SGV ROP to ensure that AUSD students are prepared for college and career. Um in addition to that, Superintendent Ortega and our Board President, Benia Rodriguez, thank you for your leadership and support in all of our ROP programs as well. I'm extremely privileged and grateful to work in this partnership with a dynamic team to provide the highest quality CTE for Azusa students. Next slide. So San Gabriel Valley ROP, who are we and what do we do? Let's take a look. Um we empower students to become confident lifelong learners and self-reliant professionals by providing equitable opportunities through rigorous career technical education. And some of our partners include Azusa, Baldwin Park, Charter Oak, Glendora, San Gabriel and Walnut Valley USD. And we provide high quality CTE, work-based learning, state-recognized career technical student organizations and much more that we'll talk about later today. Next slide. Now let's get started as we take a look at AUSD CTE and most importantly, student achievement. Let's take a moment to discuss how we got here in the first place. Let's go back to twenty twenty, the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. Most of us can remember it was a COVID year. There was a lot going on. I was reunited with Frank. We had worked prior um while he was with Roland Unified School District and I was with another ROP. And Frank approached me about improving college and career readiness. He wanted to know how we evaluate pathways. So inspired, we began to go to work with gathering data and using the twelve elements of high quality CTE as our framework. Without data, the first year, we were able to measure CTE at a very low level. Um leadership at all levels was measured simply on whether you had a CTSO or not. It was a checkmark. We didn't establish if you had any students in the CTSO or if they placed. And as time moved on, um we were able to collect data to measure how well and how prepared our students were in terms of the college and career indicators. Using the same example of leadership at all levels, we were able to see based on data how prepared the students were based on competition placement. And then in the twenty-two twenty-three school year, we were able to step up our game by collecting completer data and special population data. We've also captured our district CTE data to give a complete picture of AUSD as a whole. We are proud to announce this year, as we continue to improve the process, that we've um actually been able to include that special population data in the data you'll be seeing tonight. As we strive for consistent improvement, we've worked collaboratively to implement important changes. Um the core team has increased articulation agreements with the community college. We've established CTSO chapters and we've also been able to increase work-based learning opportunities for students. As many districts throughout the state of California experience declining enrollment, the AUSD team has worked collaboratively to get ahead by refining pathways that align with the community college and provide a seamless transition to college and career. In tonight's slide deck, you'll see that each high school has a complete pathway audit tool. And that includes uh current course offerings. You'll see the twelve elements of high quality CTE report cards. And in addition, you'll see a summary for the district. The summary for the district will include areas of improvement, areas of strength as well. And our goal was not to just provide those, but we um, our goal as a whole was to work together to form a game plan to improve student achievement. Next slide. Alright, so first we'll take a look at Azusa's course offerings and you'll notice that there's multiple sectors for students to be able to select from. And AHS students have a variety to choose. It's important to note that graphic arts, multimedia and also the health science and medical technology. This was a first year offering. Um this was largely due to the um transition. It was a preparation for the merging of the two high schools as we take a look at last year. As a result, you won't see any completer data for those particular pathways and we'll take a look at that in a little bit. Next slide. Alright, now let's take a look at how we're able to measure each of the twelve elements. So you can see here that student-centered delivery, it's it's essentially measured by pathway sequencing and pathway completers. So you'll see that in the next few slides. Equity, you'll see is measured by our special populations. So that's going to include all of the IEPs, five oh fours, English learners and all of our specials populations. Um in addition to that, you'll see that leadership at all levels is measured with our high quality CTE indicators that include career technical student organizations. So that'll be up there as well. And our industry experience teachers attend professional development regularly and you'll see a little bit about that as well. Alright, next slide. So here we're able to take a look at elements one through six, so the elements that were measured earlier. And some of what you'll notice here is the completer totals in that first column. You'll also see some links to our recordings in terms of our college and career workshops that were available to students in terms of access. We wanted to make those available to everyone. You'll see the CTSO chapters and all the different levels of competition. Pretty good Skills USA uh amount of students that participated and some that actually um placed at regionals. So those are good numbers as well. You'll also see some certification listed there as well, CPR. And um you'll also be able to see um some professional development in the last link. Once you get this slide deck, you'll be able to click on those links and it'll take you to the areas that you'll be able to explore in more detail. Okay, next slide. On the next slide, we're able to move into elements seven through ten, twelve. Um you'll see career exploration, where we've provided all of the different um areas where students received college and career services. Um on the next column, you'll find a link to the data. So you're going to see specific data sheets with totals for each pathway and you'll be able to see it measured completely. And then the second link will take you to our Center of Excellence data. This is a regional data report that is a jobs report. So it lets us know about the occupations that are relevant to this particular area. As you continue on, you'll be able to see areas in terms of our marketing and how we intentionally create flyers for each of these programs. You can click on each of those links and it'll show you the flyers that are associated, how we sustain these programs with funding from different grants. And the work-based learning column will be our strong partnerships with industry that you'll see lastly listed there. Next slide, please. As we move on to Gladstone, you'll notice that there's three sectors offered. So you'll see arts, media and entertainment, health, science, and you'll also see public service. However, um in public service, you'll see multiple pathways listed within that sector. So you'll see an administration of justice pathway, a fire technology pathway and an emergency medical services pathway. Yes. Yes, so the audit is for last year.
Last year.
Yes, so we absolutely. We complete the audit every year at the end of the year to give a complete picture. And there's a timeline in that too. Some of the data, we don't even get till the summer um for articulation credit, for um some of our students that compete in the summer at um national level competitions like HOSA. Um we don't get some of that data till later, but yes, we are taking a look at the twenty-two twenty-three school year. Next year, we'll give you a comparison where it shows your twenty-two twenty-three versus your twenty-three twenty-four. Thank you. Okay, so um next slide, please. So here you're able to see the completers, um links uh as well are there. Uh you'll notice high number of completers, especially for the Medical Academy, if you see up top there. Those are tremendous numbers of completers. Uh high number also in the special populations across the board. If you take a look at those percentages, those are typically pretty high for our CTE classes. Um and a fantastic CTSO turnout with the HOSA students placing internationally. So you'll see those students that placed at nationals. And uh Mr. Higgs, Skills USA students placing at the state level as well too. So pretty good CTSO participation. Next slide. So let's take a look at the remaining data for Gladstone. Um some of the highlights include uh twenty-four Medical Academy students that received articulation credit at Mount SAC. Um you'll also see forty-three ITIS students. You'll also see 43 ITIS students receiving dual enrollment credit at Citrus College, and some pretty impressive high-level work-based learning was completed at City of Hope, so that's awesome as well. Next slide. We'll take a look at Sierra High School and Sierra, the California Model Continuation Site, very exciting. Four pathways were offered there, which is a pretty heavy load, I would say, for an alternative ed site. Okay, so we'll talk a little bit later about some of the refinement that went into that as well. The four pathways are laid out, so you'll be able to see that. On the next slide, you'll be able to note that at an alternative ed site, we'll go to the next slide so we could take a look at some of the data. Our lens is a little bit different at the alternative ed site in terms of sometimes the goal for students is to return to their comprehensive site. So we don't aggressively look at the completer data as we should. In this case, you're going to see it's a little bit different. Here, you'll see quite the opposite, and that's largely due to the culture that you spoke of earlier. This is a true testament of Principal Peterson now and Principal Stout prior and the culture that's been created there. Students aren't rushing back to the comprehensive site. Typically, when we see an alternative ed site, we may see one completer at most, and here, you're seeing two, four, six completers out of the whole school, so a very positive note in terms of completer data there. Now, in terms of pathway refinement, the pathways have now been refined for this school year and going forward. That will include graphic arts, multimedia, and health careers. Those are also in alignment to the comprehensive site. So those pathways, if a student does return, can easily transition back into that CTE class at Azusa High School, just as if they were taking it at Sierra, so there's no interruption of their education, and they're able to complete the pathway to increase your numbers on the dashboard as well. All right, let's take a look at the next slide. And here, we also have some important data to look at is the funding sources, so you'll be able to see all of the different funding sources that were met there. And then on the next slide, we'll be able to give you a summary, so we can take a look at the areas of strength for Azusa High School. Some of the areas of strength include sequencing, so the pathways are complete there. Some areas of improvement for this year, we're looking at increasing pathway completers, some of that work-based learning and early college credit through articulation and dual enrollment. Some of the areas of strength at Gladstone were that the pathways were sequenced, certification was high, and they had a really good turnout for their career technical student organizations. And then some areas that we can improve in for Gladstone High School were the pathway completers and work-based learning, so those will be transitioning over to Azusa now. For Sierra, some of those areas of strength, they had a pretty hefty list here. They were doing a lot of things right, as you can see, so sequencing, certification, we typically don't see happening at an alternative ed site, but these students were walking away with CPR certification in the health pathways, so that was awesome. And also, their pathway completer number was something to brag about as well. In terms of the accomplishments for Azusa High School, 168 students were affiliated with Skills USA, so that's a very big number for the chapter for CTSO. In terms of some accomplishments for Gladstone, you'll see the different number of students that received articulation credit and dual enrollment credit and the level of competition that they were able to place at, very positive numbers to be able to place at the International Leadership Conference and the State Leadership Conference. And again, for Sierra, that highlight being their pathway completers, so great work there. All right, on the next slide, you'll be able to see a pictograph. And if this looks familiar, Superintendent Ortega, I think, created a few years back. I saw it, I liked it, and I said, why don't we steal that? So we did. And this just gives you a quick snapshot of what that data looks like, so you'll be able to see how many total students for CTE, 924. Some of the really big highlights are your UCA to G courses that you offer, 21 there. Students receiving college credit, that's actually a low number, I'll up that for you, that needs to be updated as well, too. And work-based learning numbers, I think the huge highlight here is the CTSOs and seeing those students placed nationally. I do these presentations for all of our board partners, and I have yet to recognize anyone that had students that placed nationally, so that's a huge testament to those CTSOs and how they're working. And to keep this CTSO thing going, on the next slide, we'll be able to take a look at some of our CTSO results for this year. Okay, so they were on the other slide deck, sorry about that. We'll get you the revised slide deck, but the exciting news there is that Mr. Hague and a couple of other teachers, Mr. Del Real and Ms. Dorsey, with their Skills USA chapter, have students that qualified for the state competition, which will be happening April 1st in Ontario for Skills USA. And Ms. Jenny Aguirre has a number of students, probably 20-something students that qualified for state competition, which will be happening this year in Anaheim, so we're looking forward to cheering them on April 1st, yes, during their spring break. I know some of our teachers are very excited about that and students as well. This concludes our board report. Madam President, Superintendent Ortega, this concludes our board appointment, but we're happy to ask for any questions, but we also like to be mindful of your time.
Any questions, colleagues? Board Member Ball?
Thank you for your presentation. Which are the institutions that we have articulation agreements with?
So Mount SAC and Citrus right now.
And when you say right now, does that mean that there are other potential partners we're looking at?
Yeah, so right now, we're working on a particular grant, the Golden State Pathways Program Grant, and some of the requirements for that grant is in direct alignment with the Chancellor's Office in terms of providing 12 units for students to be able to graduate with. That's the goal for the Chancellor. So some of that may include a program called Get Focused, Stay Focused, that may be offered with another institution, but we're not sure yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much for that great presentation, Bridgette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to item 13.1, Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution 23-24-20, authorizing submission of waiver for Ellington Elementary property, Resolution 23-24-21, authorization submission of waiver for former Sierra High School property, Resolution 23-24-22, authorization submission of waiver for Mountain View Elementary School property, and Resolution 23-24-23, authorize, authorizing submission of waiver for Powell Elementary. We are now, we will now hold a public hearing, obtaining a waiver for the sales of four district properties that include district property located at 5034 North Clydebank, Covina, California, commonly referred to as Ellington Elementary; district property located at 1134 South Varanca Avenue, Glendora, California, commonly referred to as Sierra High School; district property located at 201 North Vernon Avenue, California, commonly referred to as Mountain View; district property located at 1035 East Manaloa Avenue, California, commonly referred to as Powell Elementary. The district is holding this hearing to allow for public comments on whether to obtain a waiver for the State Board of Education. The waiver would, the waiver would waive statutory language otherwise required more restriction procedures during this statutory surplus property sales process. This would allow increasing flexibility for the district to explore sales of these properties. This specifically includes, for example, waivers of restriction bidding, public auction requirements. Can, can I open the public hearing? Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, any discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, place your vote. Motion passes 5-0. We will now open the public hearing. I invite anyone who wishes to speak about the waiver of certain surplus properties requirements to address the Board of Education now. Do we have any blue cards or do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
There is no more written or oral comments. I now declare the public hearing closed at 7:55 PM. We will now vote on each resolution individually. Approval 13.2, approval Resolution 23-24-20, authorizing submission waiver for Ellington Elementary School property. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, still have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, any discussion? Student Board Member preference?
Yes.
Colleagues, place your vote. Motion passes 5-0. Now on to 13.3, approval Resolution 23-24-21, authorization submission of waiver for former Sierra High School property.
Motion to approve, 13.3.
Second. Motion by Board Member Arianez, second by Board Member Benavides, any discussion? Seeing none, place your vote, please. Motion passes 5-0. Item 13.4, approval Resolution 23-24-22, authorization submission of waiver for Mountain View Elementary School property.
Motion to approve, 13.4.
Can I please ask for the motion first, please?
What, motion?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, 13.4.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavides, any discussion? Seeing none, place your vote, please. Motion passes 5-0. Now moving on to 13.5, public hearing and consideration Resolution 23-24-23, authorization submission of waiver for Powell Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, still have a second? Second by Board Member Benavides, any discussion?
Yes. At this time, as we, as we are voting for these properties to be sold, I want to express my gratitude to our community. Being a lifelong resident of 45 years plus in this, in this community, this is, may not be, this is maybe just a vote for some people, but it's not just a vote for me. We have, in the last three years, have gone through an emotional roller coaster as a board, as a district, as a community, as we have come together collaboratively to make this happen. So this is historic, and this is something that I am very proud, as an Azusa, to be part of. So I want to express my gratitude to all of you. Thank you, Cabinet. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, community, for coming together to make Azusa Unified School District stronger, because strong, together, we are stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, place your vote, colleagues, please. Motion passes 5-0. Now we're moving on to item 13.6, Presentation of Surplus Property Timeline. Mr. Ortega, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President. I'd like to share my screen really quickly. What we'd like to do today is just provide the Board of Education with a quick update on our surplus property timeline. We are making a commitment that every single board meeting, we will bring this timeline in an updated fashion to continue with our, our values of being transparent and being communicative. So since our last board meeting, F3, which is our legal firm, delivered draft memos for us that we then sent to our 711 committee and to our bargaining groups. Those memos were sent on 2/16/2024, and a follow-up reminder was sent on 3/4/2024. Obviously, you know, because you were there, we held our board meeting on 2/13/2024. We also sent out all of the notices to the appropriate entities. Those were delivered to the post office on 2/16/2024. And then we also did a notice of publication regarding the waiver submission, and that was sent to the Tribune on 2/16/2024 as well. On the 21st of February, the first publication in the Tribune happened. On February 28th, the second publication of the Tribune happened, and on March 6th, the third publication in the Tribune happened. And so that keeps up to date on where we're supposed to be in, in the timeline. And again, we will bring this to the next board meeting to update you on these steps as we go through them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ortega. We are now moving on to 13.7, Vote of California School Board Association, CSVA Delegation, delegates, assembly representatives. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, still have a second? First of all, do we know who we're voting for? Name should be here on your agenda. We have at this time Jeanette Flores from Charter Oak, USD, and Roberta, I will spell her last name because I cannot pronounce it, P-E-R-I-M-A-N from Pomona Unified School District, those are two persons we are voting for. Do I have a motion?
I would like to motion for Jeanette Flores from Charter Oak.
We need two.
And Roberta Pearlman.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place our votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Now moving on to item 14.1, approval of the 2020-23-24 Azusa Unified School District Second Interim Financial Report. This is an information slash action item. Ms. Jamal?
Thank you, Board President. Tonight, I'm happy to present the second interim report for the school district. So we're required by the two educational codes, 42130 as well as 42131, where we present the district's financials twice a year. One is first interim, which is honored before December 15th, and the second is now for second interim, honored before March 15th. We will start with our budget assumptions. So this is to give you a picture of our budget cycle year. We are here now in March during our second interim, and we'll be back in front of the Board of Education in June, where we're adopting our LCAP as well as our adopted budget after we receive the information from the May rebuys coming up in the coming months. Here are our budget assumptions. Not much has changed since first interim, but we did have a change in our COLA, and so what we're doing is we're showing all the three different COLAs that we, for this one physical year. So we start with our adopted budget, go to our first interim, and now we're here at second interim. The COLA for this year remains the same at 8.22%, but the COLA for next year has now dropped from a The COLA for this year remains the same at 8.22%, but the COLA for next year has now dropped from what we thought at first interim, 1% to now 0.76%. Here are enrollment projections. Everything remains same except for our actual enrollment for 2324 has now been certified, which was not done by first interim. So our actual enrollment for this year is 6,311 students. So now we're going to go over our revenue. Our largest pot of funds comes from our LCFF, which is our state funding. That's $106 million. That is broken up in several pots, which will be our base grant, supplemental concentration, as well as our concentration add-on. Here is looking at the change in revenue from first interim to second interim. We have a change of a decrease in revenue of $790,000. This is not a loss of revenue. This is a change in funding, meaning, so we have our one-time funds, and we only can account for the actual revenue when we have planned expenditures. If we do not have a planned expenditure that will materialize on or before June 30th, the funding stays in our bank, but we do not account for our financial statements. So you'll see it's not that we received $2.1 million increase in state revenue. That's us now realizing some of our one-time funds that we are actually planning to spend on or before June 30th, whereas with our local revenue, we have a change in 2.8 million, which we will not be spending on or before June 30th. This is giving us a chart, I mean a pie graph, to show exactly how our funding looks. So 62% of our revenue comes from LCFF, 19% from federal revenue, and 13.2% comes from state revenue, and local revenue is 4.2%, sorry. And now we're going to look at our expenditures, continuing with the same trend of looking at the change from first interim to second interim. We are showing a reduction in expenditures of 24.6 million. Again, this is not us cutting anything. This is us realizing what expenditures we will actually, that will actually materialize on before June 30th. At first interim, we had a lot of our one-time funding expenditures inside here. We had our ESSER funds, which we planned on finishing out our H-BAC project. Not all of the items are going to be received on or before June 30th. For example, because some require DSA approval, so we know we will not receive that approval on or before June 30th.
Yeah, Board Member Greer.
So, yeah, with, with that in mind, looking at these, at the dollar share, it appears that books and supplies is the largest chunk of, you know, proportion of the 24 million that wasn't spent. Can you just speak to what changed as to why we were imagining that we would, we would expend those dollars before the end of this fiscal year, and now we're not thinking that we are going to?
That is a great question. So when we do our adopted budget, we have to budget all of our funds, whether we're going to, whether the expenditure is going to materialize or not. Our placeholder spot for those expenditures is always either books and supplies, or contracted services, because we never want to inflate our people costs. So it's just a placeholder. So now that we know what we're actually going to, what plans we're actually going to materialize is going to come to fruition, now we're pulling those placeholders out. So it's not that we were planning on spending 19.6 in books and supplies, and now we're saying, whoa, we're not. It was just an initial placeholder that we had in there to account for the funding.
But would you also say that we're using less books because of the Chromebooks that the students have? Is that making a difference at all?
No, not in this case. No, ma'am. Thank you.
The President?
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
This is a little bit of a conversation I had with Superintendent Ortega around classroom supplies and how individual school sites or classrooms. Sometimes we see online, teachers are doing fundraisers, or PTAs are raising money for supplies. How does that, how do those activities reconcile with, on the surface, looks like additional funding available for books and supplies?
That's a great question. So all of our sites receive site discretionary funds, and we allocate that based on their enrollment. And so our elementary's a base amount that we provide each side, middle school has a base amount per student, as well as their high school. They also receive additional funding for extra hours. Each school site gets to determine how they want to allocate those funding.
I know we could always do more, right? If you gave me 100 bucks, I could find ways to spend it. I'm, I'm wondering how to have a broader conversation at a future meeting as we go into next year's budget about how to increase that site allocation so that the principals and their team have a bigger pot to work with.
Yes, ma'am. Most definitely have that. And I also want to give us credit, because for the first time this year, we're actually giving additional funding for extra hour before. The sites never had that funding, and we also increased the per pupil rate from the previous fiscal year. So this year, our sites are receiving more, but we most definitely could have that conversation in a future board meeting.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes. So our sites previously did not receive funding for extra hours. They only received funding for discretionary funds, which was like books and supplies. This year, we actually gave them a pot of funds that they can utilize for extra hours based on the needs of their campuses.
So school sites received an extra hours allocation and discretionary allocation, because it would be used on books and supplies or field trips or things like that?
Yes, ma'am. And the only thing that we asked is that the allocation that we gave for people cannot be transferred for supplies. That was our only rule that we put in place.
And then just for transparency, that extra pot was not only for extra hours, it was extra hours and subs.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Board Member Greer?
Would you be able to provide us with an update with the amount of the discretionary kind of funding that each school site has? And is that determined by the school site council that determines the allocation of, of those funds?
No, we determine at a district level the amount per elementary student and the amount per secondary. But the sites determine their budget on how they want to utilize it. It does not have to go to school site council, but they do go to school site council when you go to your title funds and other categorical funds.
So, and does each school site determine that differently? Like, are there some school sites where principal just makes that decision? Are there some school sites where teachers are spoke, speaking to that? How, how is that determined how those funds are allocated?
I don't have the specifics, but I know what we do is we give them a spreadsheet and say, hey, here's your allocation. So, for example, $11,000. Now you tell us how would you like to budget that. We don't even tell them what they can't do. We, we do provide them their budget of what they had the previous year to help them with their decision-making, but they let us know exactly how they want to plow out their funds.
I think the reason why I ask that is because going back to Board Member Bo's questioning around this, this idea of teachers who are fundraising for, for particular supplies. If, if we are allocating, if we're, if we are allocating resources to go to, to school sites, but the educators who are, who are doing the direct teaching aren't speaking into, to it, then it, it doesn't really solve that, that problem. So if there, as we imagine, ways to, to utilize these funds and maybe pass some of these funds along, additional funds along to school sites, I would love it if part of that was ensuring that our, that our teachers, we ensured that they had some say in, in even whether it's across subjects or just specifically within their own classrooms because of certain things that teachers are, are doing specific to their classroom. I, I'd love it if we, if there were some mechanisms for, for some control closer to the ground level.
For sure. And I like to add to that regarding, do they give a rationale why teacher A or teacher B should get more than the other? I mean, is there any reason why?
No, and, and well, honestly, at the site level, I don't have that level of information. What I can tell you is that Azusa High School put $10,000 for books and supplies. Azusa High School said, I'm going to spend $70,000 on athletics. That's the level. But as far as at the school level, who isn't going to have part of that $70,000 for athletics? Or who is going to have access to the books and supply budget? I don't have the information, but I will partner with the site so I can be able to provide that update with the board.
Mainly at the elementary, because the elementary teachers seem to be the ones that are always buying their own stuff, going online. And, and I really would like to see, you know, who do they decide and the rationale behind it? You know, or maybe this year we're going to give it to Ms. What's-her-name, or B, and next year maybe, you know, to make it even, right? I don't know.
I will find out.
It's all the time. We don't know that, but I think it's important that we do know that.
Yes, ma'am. I will find out.
The funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further questions?
All right.
Move on. You're still going, right?
Okay, so this is the same information, but now in a, a chart. So this is to show that for our certificated staff, that's 34% of our budget. For our classified staff, that makes up 12% of our budget. Employee benefits is 20% of our budget. Books and supply, 10%. Contract services, 17%. And I just want to give thanks to the Board of Education for their bold decisions. You'll see that our employee benefits percentage is, is growing year over year. So that's increasing the district contribution towards our employee benefits. And here is our multi-year projection. So here, where I'm showing, we are meeting our required 3% reserve in the current year and the subsequent year. But for our third year, we do have to have an adjustment of approximately $747,000. But before I get to that number, I also want to acknowledge that because of our budget cleanup and us truly looking at the expenditures that we are actually going, that we plan to actually materialize on or before June 30th, we are not showing that we're deficit spending for this current fiscal year. We show now we have a surplus of $16.2 million. Now granted, we do show deficit spending in the subsequent years, but remember, we have a structural deficit because we're constantly carrying funds from the one year to the next, and as long as you're spending dollars from a previous year, you always show a deficit spending. Okay, now for our 2526, we have a $747,000 shortfall that we have to account for. We are confident right now, due to our budget cleanup process, through, through attrition, that over the next two years, counting this year and next year, we'll be able to realize reduction if this comes to fruition. Because we have to remember, this is based off the current projected COLA, and we've seen it change twice in less than six months. So that could also change again. But also, I know if we think about our surrounding districts who are hearing other reductions that they're having to make at this time, but because of the bold decisions we have made, thanks to the Board of Education from things over the year, we've been able to save our budget and make true decisions and make sure we're not just spending frivolously on things that do not have to happen right now.
Yeah, I wanted to just make a comment that I also wanted to congratulate the district and the staff because there is a lot of, a lot of districts are making budget cuts, adjusting, even reorganization to just eliminate some positions, and that's happening around us. And, you know, that was one of my conversations with Superintendent Ortega, is that, one, you know, thank you to the Azusa Unified School District staff, that we are in the black and that, but we also have to prepare for the future, right? And with the governor's budget and all and so forth, and the deficit being bigger, it's going to impact us in the future. So I want to make sure that we as board members are also being transparent with our staff, teachers, students, and the community in, in general regarding the, you know, because it's, we don't see the impact now or in 2526, but eventually those numbers may grow. Hopefully that won't happen, but it's just something to be aware of. But thank you to the staff that we are in the black, and that 747 doesn't look as bad, okay?
Yes, and just full transparency, if we had that next year up there, we would have a greater shortfall that we would have to come from. But we are, we have been doing what we call budget deep dives, and I am very proud under the leadership of Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. We have been rolling up our sleeves. We have been starting with positions, because that's always your largest budget, and we're going line by line. And some people may say, oh, that's too much work, but that's what it takes when you truly want to make sure you're making decisions based off true numbers.
Yes, I want to thank you for your hard work, because that's really true. I had been reading just when they cut the COBOT funding, right? And now they're taking it, not taking it back, but they have to use it at a certain point. Now everyone's like, oh, my God, now what do we do? Right?
Yes.
But Azusa's not doing that, so cool.
Thank you.
Good.
So here is our, our component.
Board Member Bo? Oh, I'm sorry.
I never know when to jump in, so I guess I'll just do it now. I have two questions. One is around people cost. So between or among salary and benefits, certificate, classified, and then benefits, I'm adding up 66%. How does that align with other districts or rule of thumb in terms of how much we should be spending on people total?
Okay, so two responses. So as far as how it's aligned to surrounding districts, we are comparable. But is that the norm? No. And the reason why is because all of our, all the districts, including the surrounding districts, receive so a lot of one-time funding that we cannot use on people. So as long as we're spending more in other categories, that percentage is always going to look lower because we're spending more in our fours and fives, our 4,000 objects and our 5,000 objects.
I think that aligns to what we've seen in previous years where our percentage of budget on people has been higher.
Yes.
And you've explained that's because of how we're using one-time funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Not to be the Debbie Downer, have you heard any discussion about the possibility of state deferrals?
No, so, no, and I'm excited about that. But, so we have not heard of any deferrals. That was the talk for the January update. And the only thing that they're possibly stating is that if the one-time funding that was projected to be allocated, that will possibly defer. But any funding that is already like LCFF, there's no talks for deferral. But if any new funding that they're potentially going to allocate to schools, that is the only one that may be subject to a deferral.
Would you be able to provide the board a memo at a later time outlining our plan if we have to go to deferrals and how we might anticipate funding our cash flow?
Yes, I can actually speak to that now if you like. So, so the district, Azusa Unified is a very, very great financial, and not because I work in the business. But we, we are strong financially, you know, and I say that because the district has what's called Fund 17, which is what some districts had set aside years ago where they set aside funding for the 3% reserve. Currently, in Fund 17, we have over $2 million, which will actually help us if a deferral came in place. We also have a strong cash balance, which also allows you to for deferrals. So where a district will get into issues where a deferral comes in place, if they don't have enough cash on hand. And typically, like, we have our huge any-fund balance, we can utilize those resources, even if it's a categorical. We can utilize those resources in a sense if a deferral is put in place, as long as we're able to show we're able to play, pay it back once that money comes to fruition.
Is average days' cash on hand a metric that you track regularly or only at the end of the fiscal year?
We check our cash for all of our revolving funds and our BMO account on a monthly reconciliate basis. Our cash in the treasury, we reconcile on a quarterly basis because that is what we like to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Greer?
Out of curiosity, looking at this document, we know that we had to make, we have this slide. We had to make some adjustments. So as it shows, as though there's negative dollars here, but, but positive dollars there because of expenditures that weren't spent or monies that we're, we're not utilizing. Does that, does that mean that we may see a similar jump in that, in the negative 14, about 14 million? That, that is, that is likely to be accounted for through some of those one-time dollars, or does that, does, does that? You talked about us having a structural deficit. Is that reflecting one-time fund monies, or, or what exactly does that?
Yes. So that 13.9 is projecting that we will be spending our one-time funds, not that we're going to overspend the funding that we're projected to receive.
So we would expect, based off of that projection, when we look at 2425, that that would be closer to neutral? As, as we, as we spend dollars that come in, or it's, it's still negative because they're dollars carried over from a previous year?
Carried over to a previous year. We have some, like our community schools. We have those funds for the next five years. So for the next five years, we will show deficit spending because we'll be spending funds that we received last year that we have five years to spend.
Any further questions?
You can continue.
All right. So now we're going to go to our components of any fund balance. So on our unrestricted, we have approximately 2.21.8 million. 74% of that is our prior year carryover. We have our revolving fund cash, which is $25,000, and we have our prepaid and our 3% reserve. And our largest bucket is our restricted components of any fund balance. We're projected to end the year with all of our one-time funding and our grants, $61 million. And this is a breakdown of all those funds. This includes community schools, our arts and music grant, our remaining ESSER funds, and so on. And with that, our business department would like to ask the Board of Education to approve and accept our second interim report with a positive certification. And I will also, because I did not do this, like to thank the business services team for their help, our new supervisor, Daniel Garcia, as well as everyone else that had a hand in this. So thank you.
Do we have a motion for approve? Motion to approve? Motion by Board Member Ariana. Still have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Student Board Member preference? Student Board Member preference?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, place your vote, please. Motion passes five zero. Now moving on to fifteen point one, approval resolution twenty three dash twenty four dash twenty seven, reduction of discontinuance of certificate, particular kinds of service. Hey, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Arianez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, any discussion? Student Board Member vote? Preference?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, place your vote, please. Motion passes five zero. Now moving on to sixteen point one adjournment, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, any discussion? No.
None.
No, okay. Student Board Member preference?
Yes.
Thank you. Student, place your colleagues, place your vote, please, I'm looking at it. Motion passes five zero. We have now adjournment for eight twenty six. Thank you. Oh, I have to take my hammer.